Monday, August 3rd, Richmond City School Board meeting. At Clark.
Will the board members request please respond, Mr. Stern?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Boy. Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris?
Present.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney-Ex?
Here.
Mrs. Morrison?
Here.
And Mr. Coleman? You have Mr. Chair and your interpreter services.
Is anyone here who needs an interpreter services?
If anyone needs an interpreter in Spanish, por favor, levante la mano.
Mr. Chair, I only have one change to the agenda, and that is to move item 6.02 to other informational items, and then we receive an update on 3K classes at St. Paul's Baptist Church on South Side.
Is there a motion in September?
Second, are there any here? The motion was made by Mr. Boy.
No, Mr. Stern.
Seconded by Ms. Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The agenda has been adjusted. The next time is public information, I don't need anyone who signed up in advance.
Alright, is anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Line up tonight, right? Individuals, three minutes, groups five.
Good evening, my name is Tom Hartman, I'm speaking as an individual. I'd like to follow up my remarks from last time about the need to get serious about salary adjustments this year for the employees. The recession is over, I think we've just become very comfortable not giving employees a significant raise. And I'm not necessarily referring to the school board, but to the government entities as a collectivity. And I think this needs to change. What I would like to see personally is for city council and school board to agree to a target figure by the end of September, so that employees can constructively interact around a figure as the year unfolds. I would like to make it a 5% increase, but I would like some figure by the end of September from school board and city council. Now, how to think about raises? I know the tradition is to think that percent, like a 3% raise is the same raise for everybody. But there's another way to think about it. Consider a 1% raise, just a 1% raise. For me, that's $250, for Dr. Bennet's $2,500, 10 times as much. Now, which is the way to think about the same raise? Are the things we purchased costed as a percent of our income? No, they are costed in absolute dollars. So, Dr. Bennet's raise buys 10 times as much as my raise. Now, I'm not now arguing whether that's fair or not, I'm not saying it's not fair, I'm just saying it's a way to think about it. And I would like to conclude by pointing out that Dr. Bennet himself, shortly after he arrived, floated the possibility of a differential percentage raise for teachers at different points on the pay scale. So I just would like you to think about getting serious and about the possibility of something maybe more approaching a dollar figure raise rather than a percent raise, some creative combination.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, now the Vice Chairman, Board Attorney, now the Clerk, Superintendent, and Historian. I'm here to follow up on, first of all, my name is Reginald Martin, I live in 702 Deadwood Avenue, zip code 24. I'm here to follow up on my previous comments from the last meeting. I think that it's important for the board and the school administration to understand that if Blackwell is to become a better school, because the community is bettering itself. Now, the board and the school administration have a fiduciary responsibility, a position of trust and competence to make sure. I recently did an inspection of Blackwell School, and I used to always say when I was on the board, you need to learn how to read more than less. But guess what? They're not doing it, at that school, they're not doing more than less, and the budgets are not likely to have been the past. So, if this school does not improve, it impacts the price of real estate, it impacts the entire community. People want to move there with their children. And this school has gone down the pit, now don't be fooled by the test scores, because the test scores went down 40 and came up 10. So, see, that's a smoking mirror. So, if you went down 40 and you came up 10, that means you didn't, you actually didn't increase anything at all. Now, I bought the school report card here with me tonight, I took it to meet the school, and the school should have a report card. Now, Blackwell for a report card is dismal, and let me give you an analogy, a football team should have a quarterback. If the quarterback don't call the correct plays, no play, nobody's looking at him, he called the play, then guess what? The team is not a winner, it takes teamwork to help a school be a winner. Blackwell doesn't have the teamwork, Blackwell has no morale, Blackwell has nothing, they are just flat. Parents and teachers are intimidated on a routine basis, that's got to stop. Because in certain communities, that doesn't happen. Why is it happening in Blackwell? And get this, I went by the old, old broken school three days ago. We had a small school in Blackwell, and the old, old building, which is shut up, looks better. A big party?
That is sad.
Okay, it looks better than Blackwell, who held small school. That old building looks better, it's better kept, there's no excuse for that. These children deserve better, you know what, I'm going to keep fighting until they get better. Here's the petition that I promised you from the last meeting, and here's the report card. You, gentlemen, would you want this to be your school, and your children go into it? Report card is dismal. Thank you.
Assistant Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coleman, I'd like to introduce Sunil, CEO of Let's Talk. The board will need to move to front rows so we can see the train after he does his introduction.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, members of the leadership team of the school district, members of the community, I'm grateful for this opportunity to stand before you this afternoon. Back in November of last year, this board adopted bylaws, in its bylaws, a component of constituent service. Some of you may remember, we started work with the school district a little over a year ago, targeted towards the second side to the coin called communication, that coin has two sides, outbound messages and inbound. And the work that we've had the privilege of assisting the school district in the past year has been the listening side of the story, where parents, teachers and staff, students, members of this community, anybody, or any taxpayer, if they had a question, comment, concern, or suggestion, or heaven forbid a compliment to somebody, just making it easy for them to ensure that that reaches the right board member or administrator or staff member of the school district. Today, we've been, we have the privilege of being invited to stand before you to present a plan, and then really just follow through on that and ensure that you have everything that you need in order to do what you promised to do in these bylaws. From page 23 to page 27 of your bylaws, in section 1.5-7. I just wanted to commend you and congratulate you for the five pages that I referenced, for devoting as much attention as you have done, as to how you're inviting input from people who you are representing, and setting some measures and standards of quality, the fact that within three days, you will acknowledge and close the loop with the person who contacts you. Now, what we've done in the last 10 years in working with 350 school districts is, what you promised here in Richmond, and what you know to be a good idea here in Richmond Public Schools, is a fairly universal sentiment among board members around the country. The idea that when people elect board members, they want to continue that conversation passed after they have put you in office, to bring their grievances, to bring their concerns, to bring their sentiments and feelings on issues, and hopefully compliments for you as well as members of this, of the superintendent's cabinet, other leaders in this school system, teachers and staff to your attention. And I think that process probably happens today. What we're here today to say can put a system in place which allows you to meet those obligations with fidelity. Stated differently, in a foolproof way, every time somebody contacts you, it'll be easy for you to close the loop with them, it'll be easy for you to collaborate with superintendent's staff to ensure that you have the details that you need or assign it to somebody to do that. So I just want to introduce two people, my colleague Tori Schulte is here, and Mr. Justin Langseth, and Mr. Justin Wilk, a colleague of mine. And Justin and Tori are going to spend the next several minutes with you providing a very detailed overview of how the system works. The purpose of that overview, if we succeed in our job, is you will see that there is an easy-to-drive system that you can use for your communication needs. Now, I have to reflect a little bit of my past experience, we do these trainings fairly often, sometimes with teachers and principals, administrators. Any teacher knows, you know, managing a classroom takes a certain skill, and the higher you go with teachers, it becomes harder to manage a classroom. And then, when you are training principals and cabinet members, it becomes even harder. I've never had to train board members, but I suspect, I don't expect it to be an easy task, but I'm asking for your cooperation in this. Mr. Wilk is a trained teacher, and his task really over the next several minutes is to provide you an overview of how the system works. You have accounts that have been created on the software system. You will be, when you finish your review here, you'll be invited back to your computers. When you return back, in your district provided email account, you will have the details of your credentials to be able to log in. And Mr. Wilk will then walk you through it, allowing you the opportunity to, if you will, play with the system a little bit, get your hands dirty. The promise here when we design the system is it should be easy enough that if you could use email on Yahoo or Gmail or a system like that, you should be able to drive this. We've taken this one step further, I suspect all of you have the smartphone by one brand or another. Mr. Wilk will walk you through downloading a mobile app, so that you never have to log it into a computer, just like get your weather report here, or severe weather alert, this system will notify you when one of your constituent contacts you, notify you that you need to go and take a look at something, and you can then either respond, or if you need to seek assistance of somebody in the district, I think the system is fairly easy and streamlined to provide you that capability without having to work very, very hard. So it's meant to just make it all business. So three components, you'll see a system which enforces certain principle, or a certain process, and this is the process that you're applying in the policy, and professional development and training, which is what we're here for. So again, thank you for your time and attention today, and I will invite Mr. Wilk to come here and walk you through the platform so you can view it, and may I invite you back down here so that you can watch it up on the projector. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you get ready for this presentation, let the record reflect you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you Richmond Public Schools for having us today, and thank you Mr. Faruki for a little more introduction. My name is Justin Wilk, as Mr. Faruki said, I'm a former classroom teacher, I also have my master's in education administration. I've worked with school districts all over the country, over 300, as Mr. Faruki mentioned, this will be the first time I will be training a school board, but as someone with, like I said, classroom experience knows, you have to be flexible and adapt, so it's also the first time I've sat in a little chair stationary, so I kind of do this like my little command post, so I will do my best. Another person I wanted to introduce briefly is your account relationship, strategic account relationship manager, Ms. Tori Schulte, and Tori is a colleague of mine, and she has been working with your district going on her second year now, and I'm happy to have her join me today. As someone who, again, has worked in the schools and the districts, realize how important it has, it is to have the dialogue with the community, to be able to take in people's feedback, to take people's questions, to be based in the ears and the eyes of the community and know what is going on, because people are always talking, no matter how we like to say it, whether it's on Facebook, Twitter, social media, the internet blogs, it's happening. The idea of Let's Talk is a responsive intuitive system that allows you to take in people's question, comments, suggestions, concerns, or a lot of compliments, and to be able to take that information in. You can categorize it, take the metrics, I'll show you the full dashboard and the data that is available in the system. And then, of course, the main thing is you can be able to respond to your constituents in a timely manner. A brief overview today is, I'm going to talk a little bit about who's who in Let's Talk, most specifically the roles of the school board members, how dialogues come in, how dialogues are submitted, and then, of course, in the backend, how you're going to respond to that dialogue, and how you're going to add that dialogue. As Mr. Faruki mentioned, Let's Talk has a very nice, easy downloadable app. You go to your iTunes store, you just search K-1 insight, Let's Talk, it's a free app. And as someone who's out and about in the community knows, you're not always behind your desk, you're not always going to have someone to come up to you, you're going to be out in the crowds, you're going to be at schools, visiting your schools, you're going to be in libraries reading the kids, you're going to be out in the communities and the grocery stores talking to parents. This app, as I'll show you momentarily, allows you to collect that information in and be able to categorize it on the backend, and eventually respond to those parents in a timely manner. So, PowerPoint I'm going to use basically as just kind of an overview, and then I'm going to get into the actual backend of the Richmond Public Schools Let's Talk page. But I do want to cover some basic area language, what I'm going to use during this training. What we call a customer is people who are the source of the dialogues. This could be parents, students, staff members, community members. I'm sure as many of you as board members know, you probably have staff members who come up to you and talk to you when you're on the schools, expressing some of their compliments, desires, wishes, sometimes maybe even complaints. You have students, of course, you have parents in the community, of course, the community as a whole. When we talk about interest areas, these are your topics, and I'm going to show you your page that hopefully will go live in a couple of days, that will show you your interest areas, which Tori and I worked together collectively with your team to put the school board here individual pages, and then, of course, some central office pages as well with Dr. Bennet's cabinet. Dialogue, this is what comes in, whether it's a question, comment, suggestion, concern, or compliment, these are what's coming in from your community members, and you all are your Let's Talk users. And you are all the ones who will log into Let's Talk, whether on your app, at your computers at home, and respond to dialogues. Two key types of users we call, are what we call team owners, and then we have team members. Now, for the case of how we set up your page for your own school board accounts, again, I'll show you what it looks like. You, the individual school board member of your district, are the team owner of your page. Ideally, what happens here is, when a dialogue goes into the page, and again, I'll show you how this works, you get an email alert to your Richmond email address, letting you know that a dialogue has been submitted. Of course, that email alert does come with a hyperlink where you can log immediately right back into Let's Talk, whether using your phone or on a computer, and then you can respond and look at the information about that dialogue in the backend. Key thing is there only can be one team owner per interest area. So what that means is, if you're the school board member representing District 1, there can't be two team owners who get the alerts when the dialogue comes in. You are solely responsible for your page. Now, as I'll show you in the live demo momentarily, you are also the one on the backend who can reassign that dialogue. I'm sure often you're out and about, or maybe someone goes to you or submits and sends you an email, it's about something totally unrelated to your area, let's say it's about transportation. You have a unique feature on the backend with a very intuitive system to reassign that dialogue and make sure someone from the transportation team is the one responsible for resolving this dialogue. And of course, you have the ability to see your own specific reports, only you can see those reports for the metrics and the data of how it responds if you are being to your community. Now, we also have assigned what we call team members, and these are people who are able to view your dialogues that come in Let's Talk. But the key distinction between a team member and a team owner is, they do not get the email alerts. So if the school board clerk is a team member in your accounts, and Tori, I believe that is the case, correct? The school board member is a team member, oh, excuse me, the school board clerk is a team member of each of your own pages, she has the ability to log in at any time and see what's coming in to you. The good feature about that is she can nudge you in a way, or send you a reminder or something and let you know that these dialogues are coming in. This person also can take the lead as well and respond to these people if it's something that she can take care of in a timely manner, she or he. Again, key difference, they do not get an alert, and you can have an infinite amount of team members. There's not just one team member, you can have numerous team members on the backend. And that's, again, assigned based off the decision that you want. And I'll show you again on the backend who your team members are the way they are. And these people only can see, again, the areas in which they are assigned as a team member. They can't go perusing about and see other things in the backend, only to which they are assigned a team member of. So, what I'm going to do now is take a break from the PowerPoint presentation and show you, of course, really where we'd like to see this go eventually live on your public school page. We will design and customize a logo for you that will live somewhere on the district page, and of course, somewhere on the school board page as well, because this is where people will be going to communicate and interact with you. So now I'm going to show you your page, let's go to it. So right now, and again, I apologize about the screen dimensions here, but I'm working with the computer here. This is your Let's Talk page, and this is something we've been working on for quite some time with your team, some back and forth collaboration with your team. This talks about, as Mr. Faruki mentioned, the constituent services policy, which of course is clickable. You can take it and click it and see the whole policy in the PDF. But this is where it gets great. As you see here, each of you members of the school board have your own, as you see, button here, where someone clicks on this button, so I'm going to go to, I'll do Derek Jones, District 8. And we've worked on the page, as you see here, this is all customizable, of course. Mr. Jones, we could add a little bit more, and if you want a welcome letter to the people in your community, but this shows the schools that you serve, this is the headshot I found of you online, don't worry, any of it's Facebook or anything, this is good. This is a boundary map, just for people's reference, and this is what we call the dialogue submission form. Now, just to show you real quick, in case you all don't believe it, there are other ones as well. Here's your page, see, all these good headshots everywhere. Okay, but I'll go back to Mr. Jones in this case, District 8, and I'm going to be one of his constituents, and I'm going to submit a dialogue to you, Mr. Jones. I'm going to pretend I'm a parent at Blackwell Elementary, and I'm going to give you a question. I'm going to say, my question is, I'm sure you might get these a lot, you know people who go to the principals. First day, sorry, first day, and I can't say, first day of school. This red area indicates that this is the required area for a submission, the red area. Now, other than a question, as you see here with these nice little icons, I could do, I could decide, give you a comment, a suggestion, a concern. I'm sure, Mr. Jones, you get a lot of compliments, but in this case, I'm going to give you a question. What is my dialogue for you? And again, this parent wants to know, when is the first day of school for RPS? This little paperclip here gives the parent or the community member the ability to upload a file. So maybe they have a PDF of the calendar, which I know, I'm sure you guys send out well in advance, but for some reason, they still want to know when the first day of school is. They could put that there, one of the cool features of the app. Of course, the parents could take a screenshot and submit Let's Talk dialogue through the app of a phone. I had a district who had an open house last year, and parents alerted the principal about some group eating in the bathroom, very helpful tool. Here, you indicate who you are in the community, are you a Richmond Public Schools student? Are you an employee, a parent guardian, or a community member? And these are multiple selects, because I'm sure at times you might have a community member who also might be a parent, and they might even be an employee at the district. This is where the meat of all the information is, you can be, you can reply to this parent, it requires, again, their name, I'm going to put my name. Justin W., I'm going to put my email address, you can see what comes into my account. I don't have to put a phone number, I can put either or, a telephone number or an email address, or if I want to give both, I'm able to do that. So just a quick recap before I submit this dialogue in, everyone. This page is fully customizable, I'm visiting a school board member, I want to ask them a question. I put my subject line, the area of more specifics of my topic, I can attach a file, I indicate who I am in relation to the Richmond community, I indicate that I want a response, and then I would submit the dialogue. Now, some of you might be thinking, well, what happens if I say I don't want a response? All this information would disappear, and if I was to click submit, a message would populate on the screen letting you know that, of course, thank you for your feedback, we really truly appreciate it, but because you indicated and said you wish to be anonymous, you will not receive direct response from our team. But of course, as Richmond Public Schools, we can, you know, work on the verge of that, but we really appreciate your feedback, thank you so much for visiting Richmond Public Schools. But for this case, I do want to get this, so I click submit. As you see here, a message pops up on the screen, thank you, Justin W. It gives this customer, me, Justin W., the dialogue number, so it's kind of like going to a deli counter, and you're like, oh, good, someone's going to take care of me. So I have my dialogue number, it lets me know that within three business days, someone will take care and respond to my concern. Again, this is all based off of your constituent services policy. So real quick, I want to show you momentarily. So me, the customer, Justin W., just got an email in my box, again, expressing gratitude to the district, letting me know, again, thank you so much, we really appreciate this. And then, if Mr. Jones' account had been activated, he would be receiving what we call an email. he would be receiving what we call an email alert, letting him know that, Mr. Jones, you have a dialogue inside Let's Talk that you need to resolve. Now, there's a couple different places you could go to do that, there's a link, obviously, in that email alert, or you can always go to www.k12, our company's website, k12insight.com. And again, all of you will get this full PowerPoint afterwards, so don't worry about taking notes. You click up here, Log In. I would bookmark this page. Your username is gonna be your RPS email address. Your password, when you get your alerts, will direct you to change that password and make it something that you will remember, but you'll have a temporary one. And then, once you put that password in and do it, you would log in. So I'm going to, I've already logged in on the backend of your account, in Richmond Public Schools. And, I wonder if the internet froze. But, one second, let me log back in, everyone. So, a dialogue would have come in, come in, and, don't worry, what I'm doing right here, I'm logging in on the backend of your page for the purpose of this training. Mr. Jones would have logged in, and his would say, in my dialogues, because it would be his dialogue. But of course, I'm logging in on the backend as a system administrator. He would be able to see right away in his folder, this message from Justin W. First day of school, this icon indicates that it came in from the district website. The time of reception, 6:45 PM. I'll show you on the backend how you can change the priority level. The status by default remains unopened. The interest area, you know this bottom one here, but the interest area was Mr. Derek Jones. And of course, Derek Jones is the owner of this dialogue. I could open it up and look for more of the information behind this. And as you see here, we have a bunch of information I wanna go through with you. The customer information, this was everything that Justin W. entered in as a customer asking Mr. Jones a question. I have my name, I have my role designation in the district that I clicked that I was, an employee, parent, guardian, community member. My email address that I submitted for response is in there. I did not put a phone number, that's why that is not there. You might be wondering what this 2 indicates. I'm sure you might have a lot of very active parents and community members who might like to submit a lot of dialogues, or call you, or want a response. The 2 act, is recognizing that this is the second time that Richmond Public Schools has received an email, very intuitive, it tracks this and says, this is the second time that Justin W. contacted your account. And if I was to click on it, I would see both cases. So this way, you don't have the parents who might be hitting every department or every area. You have an overall idea of how often, how frequent they're coming. Very intuitive process there. Let me close out of the past, I'm going back into this dialogue. So here we have some dialogue details. And this is all something that you, as a team owner in your account, can play with. Now, priority level, as I mentioned, by default, it stays at P2 Normal. But for your own, for your own records, if it's something that came in that was a little more urgent, you might wanna assign it as a P1 and make this more urgent, so you and your team members know that this is something you definitely need to take care of. If it's something, maybe, I don't know, I never wanna say someone's thing is frivolous, but let's just say something comes in, and maybe it's not the most highest priority, you would put P3 Low. In this case, I'm gonna leave it at P2 as Normal, it's the first day of school, we still, a couple weeks ago. I'll take care of this still within three days, like I told them, but this is not on the top of my list. Of course, you can change, I'm sure you might often have time for people sending you emails, and it might be a little bit of a lengthy dialogue. And, you know, in this case, they said this was a question, and it was a question. But maybe someone submitted something, they said it was more of a suggestion, but actually it's a question. You can re-categorize it here. Status, as I said, by default remains as unopened. But if you wanna get this going and say, you know what, this is ready to go, let's get this in progress, you change it to in progress. And you'll notice down here on the internal timeline, this is something that the customer or Jay Wilk does not see, Justin W., this is only something you and your team see on the backend. You have a status of everything that is happening through this dialogue. And again, because I'm logged in as the backend of Dr. Bennett's account, it says, Dr. Bennett, change this to in progress. So, the entry point, that cannot change, it did come from the district website. But this is where the great intuitive backend channeling of Let's Talk really works its magic. You'll notice here that it came in, interest area, Dr. Derek Jones. Now, as I mentioned before, you guys might get dialogues that might not pertain to the actual area that the person submitted the dialogue to. Obvious example would be if someone actually emailed Dr. Jones, and it was supposed to go to another board member. So if someone ever submits a dialogue and it needs to go to a different area, you would simply change the interest area, and as you see here, we've already loaded all the various department heads and the other school board members in on the backend of the page. So if I was to click and say, I want this to go to, Ms. Mamie Taylor, because maybe this is her constituent, I could click that and send that off to Ms. Mamie Taylor. Yes, we can send everything to her. I do wanna point out, because technically, Dr. Jones does not have the right to see what goes in the Mrs. Taylor's Let's Talk account. He now has no longer access to this dialogue. So he sends it off and redirects her. Now, there's a couple other things you can do, maybe, okay.
Can he save that dialogue?
Oh, this is always saved, but, alright, so that he can be a part of it still? Yeah, I'm sure, yep, good question, yeah. So Dr. Jones wants to be a part of this, right? Now, here are the team members on all your board members pages, Ms. Angela Lewis and Ms. Tanya Friend. Oh, no, it's okay, ma'am. Oh, it's okay.
So, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Friend, everything that we can see is in that, those two things are gonna be all, all beyond.
They're on the backend, I'm able to see that, yes, ma'am. That, that's how it's been set up so far, now, this is something we can revisit, but that's how the district wanted it set up. But yeah, I, I think the idea was that Ms. Lewis and Ms. Friend would be able to help on the backend as dialogues maybe came in to assist as well. But we can revisit that.
I don't have a concern with that, I'm just asking, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay.
But I was just asking, because, you know, for me, that's gonna be a good thing. Someone that works full-time during the day, I'm not, you know, it may take you four days to respond to an email. One of them can let you know that.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, and that, that's, yep, thank you so much, yep. And, and I do wanna show you now that you brought up, ma'am, so say, Dr. Jones was like, you know what, this is more of a transportation question. Didn't go to the transportation button, but it came to me. But they're still my constituent, I'm the one who represented them, I still wanna stay a part of this, I just don't wanna send it off to transportation and say, oh, I can't, I'm done. You have the ability, right here, to click this plus sign, and click a new team member that you can add into the account. Let's say that I want to add actually the superintendent. Say I wanna add him to this, because I want him to be a part of this dialogue, so he can take care of this. So if I click that and have the superintendent on the backend, now the superintendent gets an email alert in his box, and it lets him know that hypothetically, Dr. Jones has added him to this dialogue as team member. Now, that does not mean that once you let Dr. Bennett inside of your page, that he can see everything that comes into Dr. Jones. Just this dialogue, he is now a part of. And a great thing now, if you wanted, and I'm gonna pretend to be Dr. Jones here, I can even internal comment and say, "Dr. Bennett, will you please assist this parent?" And I leave the message in here. I can post the action that we're taking currently. I'm gonna post it on the backend as Post in Progress. So now this message is here, so when Dr. Bennett logs in, he will be able to see that Dr. Jones left him a message. Now, I apologize for any little confusion with the logos and stuff like that, I'm trying to be like three people at the same time. So, Dr. Jones has now left Dr. Bennett a message. Yes, ma'am. He, he will know, if, if it comes into your account and you add him as a team, he will give an alert that you've been added to your dialogue account. Yes, ma'am. No, that is correct, thank you. But I just did this extra little note on the inside, yep, okay? Yes, ma'am. You are currently, yes, an active team member in this dialogue. That, that's why I had you add him, as opposed to just send it off to the office of the superintendent. Now, if you wanted just to give it to Dr. Bennett and say, this is your concern, then you do this redirect here on your interest area and send it to his page. But being that you guys wanna collaborate on the backend together, that's when you bring him in. And then, if you wanna make sure that Dr. Bennett, let's just say, a day goes by, and maybe Dr. Bennett hasn't logged in and done anything with this, you change the owner of the dialogue by clicking here. I can reassign this now and say, Dr. Bennett, this is you, run with it, sir. He is now the owner, which means now that Dr. Bennett, in case he didn't log in a day ago when he got the add a team member email, he is now receiving an email letting him know that he owns this. Well, you're, exactly, you're still on the backend, you're a part of this, you can oversee what he's doing, but you basically told him that this is you. Yep, and so, all the meanwhile, while all this is happening, everyone, you're very intuitive, people are being alerted, updated about it, and they're all being a part of this process. So I just wanna quickly cover a couple, go back over, so if I wanted to reassign this to a totally different department, I change the interest area. Something comes in, again, to the board member, doesn't pertain to you, send it to a different interest area of the person that is responsible. If you'd like to add someone to the team, because they are actually your constituent who emailed you, and you still wanna stay on top of this, you click the plus sign like I did and add it to Dr. Bennett. And then, if you wanna make someone else the owner of this, change that owner, you can even make Tanya or Angela always the owner of it. And that basically brings them and says, you know, ladies, if you could take care of this, I'd really appreciate that. And they get alerts. I'm gonna pause real quick, as a teacher, I know the 10-2 rule, I know I talked a little more than 10 minutes. I will take a couple questions, or a few questions from any of the board members. Yes, ma'am.
So, when we log in,
Yes.
RPS even is actually be a Tanya address. A password, then some people send us via email, that you have to use a generic password and then once written in, change it, just that process. So, and this may sound a little crazy, but I know that I wanna add some to this trend. So, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Friend are always on the backend, they're always gonna own what we, what we receive.
They're team members, they don't get the alerts, until you, you can go in and make them and say, you know what, ladies, I'm busy, you need to become the homeowners. Yes.
And then, if we wanna change the status that we have the owners in, and we can click on and send it, if we still want, we're giving it to a new owner, if we still want to be involved, we can still make it interesting.
Yes, by clicking this Edit, yeah. You can add anyone who hasn't, yes, ma'am. Well, you're already on it, so you wouldn't need to add yourself, yeah. You're on, and this is your page, yeah. Good question. Thank you. Anyone else, or move on? I guess that's a good sign, as a teacher, okay? And we now say collaborate together and let's work on an assignment and, you know, but we will, I think, Tori, we did activate the accounts already, right? Yeah, yeah. We'll get the app, I'll show you the app, really cool, you'll get step-by-step instructions, but before we do kind of the hands-on, I wanna show you some other things. Because we haven't actually replied to Jay Wilk yet about the first day of school, we better call this person.
Oh, I'm starting.
Yes. So, there was, there was a dissection here, so, okay, that I flagged for you, thank you for asking that, okay? The interest area here, that you all have the ability to play with on the backend as school board members, because it's your accounts, if you change the interest area and say, this belongs to another person's account, this is not my issue. If you change the interest area, it's gone, okay? But in the case that you wanna be a part of it, don't change the interest area, add a team member, and let them be a part of it. The only time I recommend changing the interest area is if it is something that someone sent to you that really has no relevance to you. Yeah? We, oh, we, we do have a cute, we do have a cute little cheat sheet for you. So, yes, you will have a cheat sheet that explains kind of when to do what instead, yeah? Headtime, yes. Okay, very nice. Okay, so let us, so we've left questions, let's pretend we're ready to take care of this issue. I do wanna point out on the backend that Let's Talk gives you the ability to tag this dialogue, meaning that for the system metrics and such, and I apologize about the screen dimensions here, this is not my computer, but you can see that Let's Talk comes with about 100 preloaded tags. Some of the most common tags in systems, like athletics, testing, things that come in. Now, your team on the backend, the district has the ability to contact Tori and I and say, actually, we'd like these 50 tags that are very pertinent to Richmond to be loaded in. So then, if things are coming up in the system that you would like to tag it, let's say that, you know, this is about athletic fields, and again, I, we try not to put some screen dimensions, I promise. Yeah, we could tag it. Yeah, it, it is very, like I said, you can type the keywords here without having to see the full screen, and we could tag it without the ability, but anyways, so tagging is a helpful tool, if, again, I had the ability to do it. But, on your computers, I recommend, part of this first activity to do is to tag dialogues. And again, that is something that the district, Dr. Bennett, now we can go through, and we can customize and add tags that pertain, that you want in the system.
So can you use an example of NIBL to be tagged and auto-put?
If, yeah.
NIBL makes you put on your tag, use auto-put and tag.
I, I, I'll interject real quick, again, these were preloaded 100 common tags throughout the country. So if, if our, we can revisit and customize what tags are in your system.
So if you give you, but I think,
Yes.
A person, a person that sent you an email, we've gotten emails from someone saying, I'm concerned about Let's Talk, I'm worried. So if you kept it in here, you'd technically be able to go to the same person and get that part. It would be careful. But that's not a question.
We wouldn't get into the specifics of it.
No, I, no, you wouldn't, you would be able to. We have a ticket, response out of that system, around the age of 18, which is our response would be, so and so will follow you. If they had a number, you know, please provide us, you know, that they're not considering that.
And, and Mr. Brooke, you wanted me to add, tagging is, it's optional. It's just a feature that you have the ability to kind of see the high level of kind of the things that are coming in. You're not actually telling the parent, like, I'm tagging this 504 plan and stuff like that. I'll show you the dashboard, why the tagging is useful for reporting features. Yeah, it's a searchable field, as Dr. Bennett mentioned, if you wanted to ever pull up, how many calls in 504 came in, stuff like that. But it is an option, it's, it's not something that you have to do. Okay, so, I'm gonna move on, let's take care of Mr. Justin's question about the first day of school. Thank you, Mr. Brooke. Everything that we've been doing in the system, whether it's been adding team members, changing the owner, as you see here on this timeline here, this is all logged. So if you log in two days later and want to see what's been happening and transpired since you've last logged in, it's very intuitive. So it's all logged, this is not what the parent sees, the parent doesn't get in and says, oh, wow, this is being done for me. So, you have the ability, as I said, to leave an internal comment to your team members. You want to, now, if you close a dialogue, there's a safe mechanism that says, basically, if you were to click Close Dialogue, it warns you. if you click "Close Dialogue," it warns you and says, "If you close this dialogue, this parent is gonna give," or this Jay Wilk, Justin Wilk is gonna give what we call a feedback form. That's problematic because you actually haven't responded to Justin Wilk yet. So the good thing about that is it's a warning saying, "Don't close it yet. Cancel." You need to reply to the parent first before you close out the dialogue because you want to make sure you're responsive and you have an answer to the parent before you close it out and ask them to read how responsive you were. Well, in this case, yes. Yes, someone. Someone's replying right now. Yep? So notice if you reply, it's in the blue box area, kind of distinguished that this is now going to be public facing. So what you put in here is now going to go out to the person in an email address. So again, best practice is professional and, you know, of course, you all would be. But what you're typing in here now is going to actually go to the parents. So I'm gonna write, "Justin, thank you for your question." The first day of, oops, the first day of school is August. I'm just guessing here, August 21st. That's really early, but we'll call it that. Sorry, summer. And then someone's on more, I guess it would tend to be Dr. Jones still. Okay? So, right here, if I wanted to attach a file to this, let's say, you know, "Your parent, very nice of you to ask us. Here's a PDF of our school calendar. Very helpful tool for you. Let me attach that for you and send that to you as well." And so here I indicate, do I want to send this as in progress? Meaning, we still have more to do here. Do I want to send it as pending details? Say you want to know more, like, for example, I could reply, if this was a school district that had different staggering school start times, I could reply and say, "What school does your child go to?" Then I would send the pending details because I need to know a little bit more about this. But in this case, I'm sending it as closed because I feel like I have sufficiently answered this person's question. I'm clicking now, "Send as Closed." Again, I get that warning letting you know that a feedback form is gonna go to this customer. I'm okay with that because I feel like I've been responsive. I'm giving them the first day of school date. We've done this way quicker than three days. Can you imagine if I needed to sit here for three days? So we're responding to the parent, and here we go. So I now reply to the parents. And if you ever want to see that dialogue again, the archive, basically, Let's Talk holds all this for your records, and you could look in to close dialogues. And here's some other test dialogues that I closed. But if you wanted to open this up more about Mr. Derek Jones, you see the whole timeline and everything that has happened here. And so as we wait for that response to go, in this case, this scenario, back to my email box, I want to show you a few other features of Let's Talk before we move on. As Tori mentioned during one of our Q and As a second ago, is everything here is searchable. So let's just say you had a dialogue, and again, it's searchable based off of what you can see. So you can't search and see what's come into Dr. Bennett's account. He can't search and see what's come into your account. But say you want to do a search, and after, you know, 30 days, you've had about, you know, 45 dialogues or 50 dialogues, and you wanted to pull up a search, and just like, kind of like a Google search, you can pull in keywords. Maybe I want to see everything that came in that, you know, pertained to bullying. Maybe I want to see things with these exact phrases. You can search for the origin, stuff that came in from various things. I want only to see the suggestions I received. And I'm not gonna go into every little thing here because this is part of the fun of you playing with this afterwards because it's, you know, fun that you guys can do this on the backend. As I mentioned with tabs, and this goes back to what you were asking, ma'am, a big reason why tagging is a great feature is if I click 504 Plan, I can then pull up every dialogue that we had tagged as 504 Plan. So again, a nice way of categorizing and collecting information. And then you can also do it based off of assignment information, and you just click "Search," and all that information pulls up.
So that it moves, it shows that it's closed, in progress?
It would. Yep, yes, ma'am. So if you specify, if you don't specify that you want only closed or pending, it would pull up everything that's active in your account or closed. Correct. Another great thing that I was talking, while I was going through, when you mentioned that, again, that, you know, although being a school board member is a part-time job, a lot of times it feels like a full-time job, and you're doing a lot of work, and you might not be in in a day. You haven't logged in in maybe 13 hours or such. If you log in and click the notification button here, you get to see a high-level overview of everything that has maybe gone out on the page while you haven't been there yet. So your two, the two ladies that are assigned on the backend, the clerks, maybe they've done some action while you've been gone and haven't been able to see it. You could get a high-level overview of everything they've done. You can even click it and say, "Oh, they closed this one? What was that one?" "Oh, that was the one from Justin W. about the first day of school closing." So it's a great tool. Yeah, clicking notifications, you go in and see everything that has been happening that only pertains to areas that concern you that you would see what has been happening in your accounts. For whatever reason, another nice little feature of Let's Talk is if you ever wanted to bookmark a dialogue, stuff that's been coming in, and you want to, you know, put that off to aside, say you log in, you have like 10 dialogues, but one particular is very important to you. If you click this black star, you put it into your bookmark folder, kind of almost a saver later, and there it is, nice and saved, your bookmarked. It's important. I want to get back to that one. If you want it out, click the black star, and it's gone. Again, a lot of this I want to give you the chance to explore, but I want to show you a few other features about this. If a dialogue comes in, and I want to show you some of these tools over here, the bookmark, again, you could bookmark it using the black star up here as well instead of how I showed you. If you ever needed to download the dialogue and have it for your records in Microsoft Word format, you can download each and every dialogue in the system and save it to your computer and have that information available to you if you want to download it. No reason to do screenshots anymore, nothing like that, copy and paste. You can download the dialogue into a nice, ready format. Say, a dialogue comes in and you want to actually forward that to maybe someone who does not have a Let's Talk account in the system. If you click this nice right arrow up here, you can type up 10 different email addresses and forward this dialogue to a non-Let's Talk user. So if someone's in the system that, or if there is someone not in the system that you actually need to be in touch with, you can forward this dialogue to someone else in a central office or such to have this dialogue taken care of. So again, a couple, again, the ability to bookmark, the ability to download it, and the ability to forward the dialogue are all available to you. I'm gonna close out of this. I want to get to an area real quick, and as I said, I'm not the typical guy to go to a PowerPoint, but I want to show you real quick about the app. And again, and we kind of condensed it all here, but as you know, many of you probably will be out and about and record a lot of dialogues in the community. And again, we will follow today with easy instructions on how to download the app. Do you have a question, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Just about frequently asked questions. So if we get 10 of the same question from different people, is there a place to go down and run? People ask it.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, yeah, good question. So, as I mentioned earlier, if I went to the Richmond page, do you remember when I showed you the profile pictures? I've been pulled back up the page. You guys have your photo. You guys have a little blur about you. We could add to your pages like a frequently asked file that people could download or something like that, or we can put that right up there, someone's, say, or commonly frequently asked, excuse me, frequently asked questions. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
They definitely have those terms. I've never known how to have those terms. Stuff like that.
Yeah, we, one of our best practices, the more you put forward on the page as people go in there and visit, the less likelihood that people are gonna ask questions like when the first day of school is and such.
But one thing I think of once, though, closing, certainly, there are a few times that is there's some way for us to go out there and, like, school term, two hour delay, and, you know, 12 hours delay is for our time.
Yes, so, absolutely. So we could put it up front on the message.
So I would think of that as your landing page, and you should update it frequently. So if you do a meeting greeting in the community, three weeks out, you ought to put it over there. If you're doing coffee, if you're doing community town hall meeting, that's something that you should make sure that it's constantly updated, reflecting the latest status of what you're doing so that every time somebody comes to contact you, they can see that.
So if I could give you back off for a question, generally, with regards to closing, that's initiated, is there any way that that can automatically go along? School closing? School closing. So we, if you're closing for some, that's going to be to us having to go in and collect the, and say, can that just trigger that?
We have the ability, yeah, as your account managers at K12, we can work with you on that as well. And then, you know, someone from your district has the ability, their train on the backend, to be able to update that as well. Yes, so simply, yes, we can do that for you. So as you were saying, so, if we go to District 1 here, you have the ability, again, we can customize everything on this page. So as Mr. Frupi was saying, if you're out having a town hall or if you, you know, have, you want to share a photo album or various items, we can customize that and put that on your landing page, as Mr. Frupi said. Yes? So another thing, we have the ability, as you said, so, let's envision snow days because it's happening now. It seems more like than ever. I moved down to Michigan. I brought the snow with me. You get snow days, okay? And let's just say you're getting flooded with people who want to know if school's gonna be closed tomorrow. And maybe Dr. Bennett had decided that evening at 7:00 PM, that school will be closed tomorrow. He on the backend could have our team, what we do, create a response template. So let me show you. So we on the backend could create a response template. If I click "Response Template," and this is something that only we at K12 and whoever is running your page from your district can do, if we create this for you and say, "Snow Day Policy", then the subject line is what goes out to the parents. If you click it, "Snow Days", I could put a nice little blur, you know, something about, you know, blah, 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 policy. I'm just typing something now. Blah, 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 a hyperlink to the policy. I click "Save." So now, you're getting kind of, you're saying, you're worried you're being flooded with dialogues that are coming in. In order for me to do this, I've got smooth dialogues. Thank you, Suhel, Mr. Frupi. If I open this dialogue back up from Justin W. And say, right down here, all of you would have access to see in this little down area. Instead of having to retype and reevent the wheel every time and type, "Snow Policy effective 15, four, five, six", you could click here, see "Snow Day Policy", it automatically puts that message in there for you. Voila. Yes. So that could save a lot of time for you. And that would just be something that, working with your district and your team, you know, we will train someone on, in your district level to be able to have the ability to do those and create those for you. And, you know, a lot of my district, as you know, I mentioned, I work with tons of them all across the country, whether it's weather, immediate weather, or whatever reason, a school closing or something, we create these all the time. Absolutely. Right now. Okay. So as I was saying with the app, you know, of course, you know, with the app, you have the ability to log in. And I could get on my phone right now and say, you know, "I just spoke with District Number 1. I log into my app. I put, you know, the full thing. I put the fields." And just like, kind of like we were doing on the Let's Talk page, but it's able to be done right on your app. And those of you who might be on your phones looking for it right now, if you search K12 Insight, "Let's Talk", you can download the app right now, school board members on your phone. But you'll be able to put that dialogue in. And what I'll show you about putting that dialogue in, meaning that I don't have my app connected to the computer right now, we do it right here by clicking "New Dialogue." So, scenario, you get a phone call. You're sitting at home on your desk, all right, your home office, and it's from one of your constituents. And you want to log that dialogue into Let's Talk for the purpose of collecting this information and the metrics. You click here, "New Dialogue." You all remember the same form. This is the same form that basically your constituents saw on the Let's Talk homepage. But you put the subject, so I'm gonna say, let's just say, "Snow Days", not to curse you guys. Parents suggested we close school when 20 or below. Is documenting that or whatever, suggestion? Who does it pertain to? Now, you have the ability, of course, to assign it to yourself because ideally, you're talking to the person. But maybe you're on the phone and it actually deals with Ms. Kristen Larson, and you want to let her know that this came in. So you put her name. You basically pertain it. You assign it to her. Who did you get it from? You spoke with, let's say, a parent, guardian. Did they give you their contact information? Sure, they did. They said their name was Kelly, Kelly Smith. They didn't give us the email address, but Kelly is more of a phone person. So we put her phone number in, blah, 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 blah. Hope that's enough. How did you receive it? This is the only little new thing that's different than what the customer actually submits when they click on the button on your page. You indicate how you received it. Was it a personal observation? This is a great tool with your app. If you're shopping in the grocery store, maybe you overhear something, or you get into a nice dialogue with people at the grocery store. Personal observation? Was it an in-person meeting that you had at a coffee shop with one of your constituents? Was it a phone call? Did they call you? Was it a voicemail? Did they write a letter? Definitely still possible. Or was it other? In this case, let's just say it was a phone call. I click "Submit," and of course, it says I have an invalid phone number. I click "Submit," and now I've submitted a dialogue in. And that's, the whole process starts all over. Now it's going to the vice chair because it pertained to her. You assigned it to her. She's gonna get an email alert saying that dialogue has come in, and now she has this information. So again, if we go back and start all over again, it would be in her dialogue folder. And here it is again, Kelly Smith. We have a dialogue. Notice it's a different icon because we recorded it ourselves. The same thing works on your phones. I think you're gonna find it very intuitive and a great feature as you're out and about. You're talking to a community member. All of a sudden, you, you know, of course, we live on our phones, but you can say, "Hey, I'd like to take my phone out and record this so I can get back to you at another time." Be responsive. Type in, say, "Oh, can I have your name, your information? I'm gonna put this in our system and make sure someone takes care of you in a timely manner." So you can do that with your app. And as you see here, you can do it from the luxury of your desktop, or PC, or laptop. Wherever you're at, you can log a dialogue in by pushing this nice plus sign, "New", and collecting that information. Before I move on to show you the whole kind of the robust nature of collecting all this information and why it's important in the dashboard, does anyone have a question about logging in dialogue in? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? That never happens.
And ultimately, the person is the, I don't know if it's, you know, talking to them because it's not me. So if I want to make a suggestion that I don't know who the individual lives because I was having a conversation, but it would sound like it's a good suggestion. Should I go to ask them for your information or do I just put "No"? Does that stop it?
Not to go into a proper, or what you feel comfortable with with the person, but in this case, let's just pretend you want to collect this because it's a helpful suggestion. You can still log it in and just say "No" for contact information, submit it in. You don't have to necessarily, you can close it out because, you know, but if you want to keep it for your records or if it's something that you want to send to Dr. Bennett because you think it was a great suggestion, absolutely, you send it off to him. And at least he knows that's there. Absolutely. Great scenario. Thank you. That was good. Any other questions about logging in a dialogue? Oh, I talked already? Oh, my goodness. I'm just having some fun. Okay, real quick, I want to show you the dashboard. And being that your account has not been open very long, I want to log into our demo page dashboard that we use for these trainings called Model Community Schools, just to show you kind of what the data looks like and how it works. Okay, Tori, do you know your login name? Instead of waiting, you can wait for me to remember my login name. Okay. Sorry. We're going to log in and show you some data.
I was logging in. So tomorrow, the Public Information Office, Mr. Davis, will actually send you a copy of this presentation. As noted, we already sent, we already activated all your accounts, which also have emails waiting for you.
And the password again?
The password has been temporarily signed to with the email that you received, and it will come back and go in and create something that you remember.
Thank you.
And then we'll give you an opportunity to play, and once you decide, certainly, when you want to go live, you have probably not, you know, two weeks or so, you have some time to play inside, as much as you have. Maybe go out and make some dialogues, add some other board members, maybe add someone from the central office, the district office, so go ahead and play with it, but you're working for the life of the dialog. And then once you go, before you go live, you can go ahead and perch those demo emails. Um, no, we have, we're going to work with, um, Dr. Bennett, so we'll determine what's speaks to you, and determine what day you go live. We'll also work on a, so your Public Information Office doing a promotional campaign, so we'll know that this year.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, and we'll take any final questions in a second. What we did was, we went through the dashboard, and I apologize for a little delay there. This is the dashboard, and this is where all the data lives, and this is why all the responsive and timely feedback and this constituent servicing, this is why this matters. Because you have the access to see what we call the dashboard, and how your own individual interest area, whether you're District One, District Two, District Three, you only can see your own reports, how you're doing. But in this demo, I'm just showing you our fake school districts, Model Community Schools, hypothetical school districts. And this is what we call the dashboard. And as you see here, we have all these graphs and numbers and metrics here, and it's all customizable. And the first three, this is the high-level overview right here of the district as a whole. As you see, it has 111 past due dialogues. This is not Richmond Public Schools. This is a negligent district. And if you wanted to see the 111 past due dialogues, you could open it, and it's all clickable, and you can pull up and see those 111 past due. What's come in, what's closed. This is the feedback score. And speaking of feedback score, while I was having so much fun training, remember that I replied to Justin a long time ago about the first day of school as Dr. Jones. Thank you for your question. The first day of school is August 21st. And then a brief delay, then Justin's given what we call a feedback form to rate how responsive the school district was. Very cool, huh? And so, of course, I'm going to say Richmond number, you know, you're a 10, great job. I click that in. And so then, of course, Dr. Jones would know if he clicked it, he went back in, and he clicked the notification little folder button, he'd be able to see the 10 and see his feedback score. And I realize I'm running a little bit out of time, so again, why is that feedback?
To highlight, feedback is not so much about whether you like the answer, but it's responding to the question. Maybe the breakdown is what makes this a call, is about responding to it in a timely manner.
Yep, absolutely. And you guys can customize, and that's something we can work with you and Dr. Bennett about that feedback message. It is about the responsiveness. It's not about whether you like the school closing policy or whatever, it's about how quickly you are responding. So real quick, again, this is what we call the dashboard. You can customize the timeline and see what's come in the past week. You can customize it, you can say all year. In this case, we're just looking from January 17, 2014, to August 3, 2015, in this fake account. You see all the different metrics, what's come in. How has the feedback score been over the time? Looks like we're getting slower and slower at responding to people's dialogues. What type of dialog is coming in? Is it question, comment, suggestion, concerns, or compliments? What about the priority level? When you decide something to P1, P2, or P3? What are these priorities, you know? What's coming in? Where are people coming from? And it breaks it down. What type of customers are coming in? It looks like only 7% are students. Overall, it looks like a lot of anonymous dialogues are coming into the fake school districts. What interest areas are hot right now in this fake page? As you see, it gives a breakdown, the percentages. What type of actions are we taking? It looks like 45% are resolving with a phone call. What type of feedback score are we getting? How often are, this is the really cool thing, as I showed you earlier, about how you can track how often people are coming to your page. How often are people coming in? Looks like 321 people have submitted one dialog. You have 27 people in this fake school district have submitted 10-plus dialogues. Looks like they might be very active. And remember about that 504 plan about tags? Why is it a great tool to tag? You can pull up a report and see what are the most common topics coming into the system. And if you click on it, it digs down even deeper. Okay, there's that 504 plan. And then the last thing I'm going to leave you on is that you can download this and make really ready-made presentations for your constituents. Have a monthly coffee session, want to give them a high-level overview of how things are going? Click Download. You can download a single-page PDF report or a full PowerPoint. Let's say in this case, I'm going to do a single-page PDF. I'm going to do it on, of course, you guys will only be able to do it for just your page. I click Download. And momentarily, a nice printable PDF form already done for you, giving you the metrics that you can share, and you can customize the timeline and say, oh, this is the July coffee session, this is the August coffee session. This is what's coming into my Let's Talk page. And as I mentioned before, if you want to give a PowerPoint presentation, you can customize what type of metrics you want to show. You click Download. And the great thing about the PowerPoint tool is it doesn't come saved as a PowerPoint presentation. It comes where you can customize it whenever it's going to load momentarily, where you can add your own district colors, your logos and such. And momentarily, as you see here, it comes already pre-made for you. Dr. Bennett wanted to give an overview to his cabinet about how things are going in the past month in Let's Talk. He downloads that, gets a full status report that he can use for his cabinet meetings, and customize what he wants and what he does not want. Yes, sir.
Question, if you, or if you, this goal is to provide our, forgive us for service that's not responsible, that's why we need the system. Question, then it comes, I've talked between stories, I'm wrong, the next question. Then it comes, I, you, it comes with a rare email, and you produce this, functions on the equipment in the system from the email, because the board members may see all thread, have to print the emails, emails, chat or emails.
That, that is email to dialog. And in normal circumstance, part of the training, the ongoing professional development, it's about a 10-minute training, email to dialog. I realize I'm out of time almost here, but yes, Dr. Bennett, that is something that I think we want to kind of get the board slowly familiar with this, and then show them how they can put their emails in. So that is available right now, and we can send easy, helpful tools. Or Tori and I can schedule a quick overview training and give that to you soon. Because, Dr. Bennett, you are correct, email can be seamlessly integrated into Let's Talk. Questions from the board?
It's been a while since this was served, and it's a request that Dr. is not responding.
So you said it's a while?
No.
It was, it was not enough?
Oh, okay, cool. We're playing around with it already. Excellent.
I did want to add to, as part of your policy, there is an expectation that the citizens will be updated on the progress and status of their requests within a 72-hour or 3 days' period. Appreciate that.
So just to call that, just, do you remember, we came out to bring K-12, last year, did a little survey? Part of it was a DM customer service and filter, so we got honest responses, also made an analytics, both things we can do. This was a piece of package that they allowed to us to support their work in the district, and it made it much more transparent and engaging. Main conversation, I'm telling you, is to try to use the system, is not that they can't email, it's, this allows the board to complete a response line, and also for custom additional to see, if we can send it to our head, I can see who they responded. So now we can say, it's not about who's responding, it's denying responding to someone who's responded to a question, situation. If this doesn't, and the policy says a patient should be handled before, it requires us to put the extension services in. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Will the system be able to, uh, will we be able to email? So next, and sometimes after, something's in the email, we're getting emails, and sometimes your tag is on the board. Is there an opportunity that we can be able to, you know, once we've got so many of those, indicate that's a good use?
Not necessarily, well, yes, we can add a tag or something like that, but you will a new, one of the newest updates that's coming out, and as we are regularly updating the tool, one of the newest updates is you can do a bulk reply, or a bulk close out that email. So for example, if you did a search, advanced search with that particular user, you can click all his, his areas and just close it out and block them. And you can't necessarily, the idea of Let's Talk is never to block anyone from the community out of the conversation, but if it is someone abusing the system, you have ways on the backend to work around and make sure that you're not constantly replying, replying, replying. So there's a couple of different tools and best practices that we could definitely be help, able to help you with. And I'll tell all the board members and everyone in the district, Tori and I are always available to help you as you're learning this and trying this, I think we said about two weeks or so, or playing around with it. If you have questions, Dr. Bennett has my email address, and Tori's, you can come and email me directly. Mr. Faruki, do you come to say a counter? I will give out my business card, absolutely. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you all for having me tonight. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a question for me, ma'am? Oh.
Here's a part of our, our, we made a plan, this is not a survey, survey that we had in, we need engagement, this is super, we're going to include it, it's a new pen, it's for people who are just launching, right? So what do they call it?
Thank you all for giving me your time tonight. Thank you. Okay, please, feel free to add anything, training, one on, please. Mr. Jones.
That would actually be, I'm recommending all the, so let me, so the, they don't, they don't, they don't have to.
She's a quick one. Can you use a good phone for checking? This man, I have, I have a brother.
Um, my friends from Let's Talk, could you guys hold on one second, please, before you go? Right. Um, colleagues, I just want to put two people out there. It's Lovelace and it's Hunter are two of our go-to people here with Let's Talk. Is that correct? All right, now, first.
The next item is to discuss the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy.
All right.
Thanks, Mr. Coleman, and other members of the board. As you recall, on March 16 of this year, um, the administration recommended the approval of the application of the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy Charter, school application. That application was approved on a conditional basis, and certain things had to come back to y'all as a board. Tonight, I present three major components of those items that were requested. It's an exceptional education-related services plan, a school site plan, and the transportation plan. It's an exceptional education-related services plan, a school site plan, and the transportation plan. Specifically, on the exceptional education plan, um, they are recommending that they will use outside service providers with the exception of the school nurse that currently is in their budget, to have an in-house person provide those services. All the other services they have listed inside their plan, who they would contract with and what those services are, as well as in the MOU, they provide information on the cost. In the transportation plan, they're going to recommend, and will go through, a third-party provider called Van Gogh. Van Gogh's recommending a Class A bus, which is a smaller buses, it limits the number of students that can ride it, but it is legally meets the requirements of the state of Virginia. Um, and then they have the site plan, and underneath their site plan, they're requesting to lease the Old Grove school sites from the school system and put modular furniture. In reviewing their plans, um, the things to kind of keep view on are, one, the economic soundness of the plan and whether they will have sufficient funds on hand to meet their obligations. Underneath their proposals, they believe that the current budgets that were in their three-year projections with the application that submitted are sufficient to cover what their needs are. The things to keep in mind is, for example, with the exceptional education plan, the amount of money that will be needed with inside their budget is going to be based off of the number of students that will require exceptional education services, as well as the specific type of services needed. So they've made some assumptions today in developing their projections. However, those assumptions, as we all know, could be right or could be wrong. It's difficult to say that at this time. On the transportation, they believe that their budget, as presented in the application, is sufficient to cover the projected costs. The things that will impact those costs will be the number of students that will actually be transported, the locations of the students, because that will dictate the distance, and then the type of services which transportation will be needed, whether it's regular education buses or exceptional education buses. And those are the things that will not be known until actually the school is open. On the site plan, a couple of things to keep in mind as you're looking at it. Number one, that when the school system surplus the Old Grove site, the regulations at that time were different than the regulations are today. They did not, the city did not have to officially accept that action by the school board. And so previously, the system did surplus the Old Grove site. Now, since that surplus took place, the school system has been paying the utility bills there as well as maintaining the site when things are broken into or other events take place. So I think that in all likelihood, if you elect you, the board could lease the site, but it is something that we would have to have in communication with the city to just make certain that there's no objections to that. I'm not aware of any objections that they might have. The other thing that will occur with the site plan is a little bit different than the transportation and the exceptional education plan is this. We're at, as you're aware, we're going through the portable process with both Broadrock and Green Elementary. And it is a process. We have to obtain seven different permits before we can begin construction on those sites. Our permitting cost costs in excess of $150,000. We have to have detailed architectural and engineering drawings that are signed off and sealed by the engineering firm. So it's just like going through the normal construction process. Even though it's a modular building, there are certain things we have to comply with in doing that. In looking at their budget for the site plan, they're going to use Mobile Modular as their recommended company. That's the company we're using today on both Broadrock and Green. However, I can't tell from their budget if that includes the A and E cost as well as site plan costs of bringing the utilities from wherever they're coming from to the building itself. Mobile Modular can obviously make the connections, but you have to bring utilities from one point to another point. That's something that we would work with them and try to resolve. The other things that were discussed at the March 16th meeting was the fundraising and the raising of capital. Uh, they are in the process of conducting fundraising as we speak. Um, they've had four months since the application was adopted. That's given them their momentum, and they're beginning the fundraising process. They're going after their larger capital donors, believing that's the best strategy at this point in time. And, uh, while there may not be a whole lot to say, they've got X amount of dollars raised, the organization and Charter School believes that they're on a good course to continue to raise funds. A thing that we will talk to, um, Metropolitan about that we probably did not address as much before is when we move into Old Grove, what security may be needed inside that building, if any. Um, as you're aware, inside our middle schools and inside our high schools, we do have security. We're aware of what goes on inside our neighborhood by working in very close conjunction with our PD and our FACE team. Um, and so that is something that I don't know that any middle school today that we would recommend not have some type of security inside the building. Okay, and even though there's only a hundred students, that might be something that, um, that was not specifically discussed with, uh, Metropolitan at the time, but it is something that we need to resolve with them, obviously, for the Charter Schools. At this point in time, it's the recommendation of the administration that you, as a board, grant plus an additional 60 days to continue the process with Metropolitan and tie up some of these loose ends, and then we would come back to you at the second meeting in October.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Krantz, um, did I hear you say you want to go to Old Grove?
They want to go to the Old Grove site.
Okay.
I think I know where you're going to go from. And I think from a pre-K perspective, that in all likelihood, Summer Hill's a better location for us in the pre-K site, but I know where you're coming from, and that is something we consider at that time.
Okay, so even long-term, if, you know, and I'm looking out, you know, okay, past what we're talking about tonight relative to the temporary solution, um, that would inhibit or prohibit, rather, uh, pre-K in either Summer Hill or Old Grove, if that's something we can...
No, sir, their site plan, their site, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, you're welcome.
Um, their site plan, as they have today, looks out for the next one to three years. Um, Metropolitan's not necessarily sold at this point in time that Old Grove is their best location. Um, their plan hasn't grown by a hundred students a year. Um, they will have to make some decisions regarding modular. Um, after two years, um, most essential lights, I mean, love it. Um, they will have to make a decision about the modular, because the city, in the permitting process right now is not like modular buildings that have a life beyond two years. So they'll have to have some plans as they go forward to getting their permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Um, a couple of things that I'm looking for in the next 60 days, if that's what the board chooses to do, is, um, on, on the budget that they have in here, they have the, um, the total projected expenses for the startup year, um, as 1.2 million to look where, where we are and how much has been raised. Um, I know that they got the grant from the state, but I understand that that money is more programmatic and not for bricks and mortar. Um, and then looking past that in the annual budgets, when the school's in operation, just the budget compared to what they'll actually receive in per pupil funding. Um, for example, in year one, the budget is 3 million, and if I remember correctly, I think they were only looking at around 200 students.
In year one, they would have 100 students, and then in year two, it would raise up to 200 students.
Okay, so that's the amount we would give them, and per pupil, would be well below 3 million if they're only having 100 students, so there would have to be some sort of supplemental funds coming...
Right, I mean, it depends on the makeup of the student mix, because, um, as I understand from Ralph, you know, if they have a higher exceptional ed population, there's some adjustments is done, but you're correct. It would be a difference, pretty significant difference between those two.
Okay. And then, um, the last thing, which you briefly talked about, just if, again, we're looking about, we're looking at a 60-day extension. Um, what I would like to see 60 days from now is, um, some sort of site assessment or, and/or plan by a contracted engineer, architecture firm, that would show the site, how it would be cleared, where the portables would go, um, if that's the direction they're headed.
Okay.
Ms. Mohammed?
Mr. Krantz, can you help me by understanding who's asking for the 60-day extension?
Both the administration and Metropolitan to, um, provide you further, you know, we would be working with them to keep the ball moving, and this continues to get them all moving, that we can tighten things up and then eventually enter into a contract, um, between RPS and Charter School.
I just, I just want to, um, state a friendly reminder that this was one of my area of concerns a few months back. I believe we were in the school when we had a lengthy conversation on the timeline. I made it very clear that I didn't think this month was going to be adequate. I didn't think that, um, with what they were asking, what we were asking them to accomplish was going to be doable. Um, and I'm saying all that to say, I am reiterating my heartburn with the original process, because I knew this timeframe was not going to be doable. So it's nothing we can do about it now. I will support with, I will support what the majority of the board decides. But if, if you all have to come back asking for another extension, I'm not, I don't think I'm going to be able to support that, because I had stated from the beginning that I think we need to look at what the school board was asking them to do. I remember asking that vehemently, and the response that I received was she was good with that. So, and here we are. So we got to make sure that this is going to be the only extension that we're, that you all are requesting.
I, I, I mean, I agree. We're getting to a point that, um, we as an administration will need to make the recommendation to enter into the contractual stage, to get the contract executed so that, you know, the process for opening school for FY17, um, is in place, so they can begin their process of, of students and, and beginning, you know, to pull all this together, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bennet?
Ms. Mohammed, I would just say that, you know, while we're trying to be user-friendly, a lot of the concerns you raise, I personally share. It's not about me, just as a superintendent. Additionally, uh, when you look at, you know, I think this is a great one of a programmatic question, which I share, in that we have gone and had presentations to the city about having too many facilities, and then the fact that we'll be potentially opening another facility. And the question still for me is, are we shuffling students or are we going to get new students? Because shuffling students means we just raise our overhead costs. Because you're not adding any additional revenue source to the pot. So if it's the same students that are already enrolled in our building, all we did was take a group of students and move them to another school to open, and all of that operational cost, and the question becomes, how does the board fund it? So that still has to be factored in also. I mean, not only the portion that they have to raise. And when you look at the guidelines, there's supposed to be a certain amount of cash already on hand for operational purposes. Uh, the special education estimates, I think, are low. When you look at our district averages at some of our schools, and when you look at special African-American males in our district, and their percentage of the population, they're typically in the special ed. Anything that doesn't work, that we don't get done right, still falls back to the district, because they are our students. So the best the 60-day can do is just be user-friendly, to try to say there was a fair opportunity. But there are a lot of concerns about being able to be successful in doing this and pulling it off.
Okay. And Ms. Spence?
Mr. Krantz, this is not the first time that this school district has, and I recognize that we've got a lot of new people at the table and everything, but do we have maybe a template from the lessons learned when we opened Patrick Henry, such that we've got a timeline, that we know that, you know, these benchmarks must be made, must be met? And have we already discussed that with this new opportunity that, you know, we've been down this path before, and we've got to hold you to these? And, you know, I guess I'm a little confused as to why are we, what's the concern right now about this 60-day request?
You know, I'm going to speak from two other districts where I've done 12 Charter Schools and been through a process. The, the biggest concern that I ever had is, did the organization have sufficient capital to open its doors and to address the changes that could occur? Because I can make assumptions about exceptional ed students, but at the end of the day, the actual is maybe significantly higher, and if they are, then your costs are significantly higher than you projected. That can cause problems. A second thing that I've seen is the facility. I can project my facility costs, but when the actual facility came about and the things that were needed, it could change it, up or down. Um, so the biggest concern outside of the educational piece is making sure you've got sufficient capital to meet your obligations, to open the doors, and have a successful year. The worst thing to do is to open the doors, and then during the middle of that school year, you run out of cash. You can't pay your bills. You can't pay your employees. As Dr. Vettin said, there's still Richmond Public Schools students, and then Richmond Public Schools is put in a very bad position in that instance. So you're trying to avoid having failure if you wanted to be successful. Um, in a prior light, we required prior to the approval of an application, um, that we, we required some type of, uh, financial certification that gave us a comfort level that they would be able to meet their obligations potentially. In this case, um, the, the administration wanted to work with this Charter School, wanted to try to make this work, okay? Um, and, and I believe the administration has, has, has worked, and, and Ms. Bingham and the whole Metropolitan team has worked very well with us. Um, they still just have some holes that gives the administration heartburn at today's point about the ultimate success of the school. The biggest point is going to be capital. Now, she has a nice budget, um, the budget ties, as noted in these reports, with their plans aren't. Like, as I described to you, a, a budget's a bit, you know, it's like those projections I gave on student enrollment. Yeah, we have a lot of fancy variables, and we use a lot of sophisticated models, and we're pretty confident those numbers are right, but guess what, it's still a yes. So a budget's the same exact thing, it's still a yes. And, um, and what if you're wrong? You could go wrong good, you could go wrong bad. I mean, you can go either way, um, but you always look at that worst-case scenario. Um, and so right now, they don't have as much funds raised as you would like to see. And so right now, they don't have as much funds raised as you would like to see. But they're moving in that direction, and that's why we asked for that sixty day extension to, to let them continue to do their fundraising, as well as tighten up their projections, particularly on the site. Okay? And as Ms. Larson's asked for, doing the A and E will allow them, for us, to show you exactly where the portables are at. And we can tie down with the cost. We can get you a better, a good estimate on what the projected cost would be, just from the work we've been doing for our, for our program.
Okay.
So, Mr. Krantz, I want to make sure that I understand this. We've, we've already approved this charter school. Is there, and perhaps we put the card?
Ms. Evans?
We have not?
We have not.
Okay, we have not. So maybe within this sixty days, can the review team make a recommendation to us such that you all feel comfortable that, yeah, we're going to hit this target? Or if you don't feel comfortable, and maybe the board could then say, you know what? Maybe this isn't something we should be pursuing? Or, you know, we, we feel confident that this is going to happen?
We, we will do it at that second meeting in October.
Okay.
It's the will of the board.
Okay, so at this point, I'm looking for heads nodding consensus for second meeting in October. I see one, two, three, four. Okay, we have consensus. And I see Metropolitan back there. Hey, all right. I'll get the clerk to communicate clearly what we've just consented to. And you all will get a copy of that. And administration, and everybody be clear on the expectations. And you all come back, as Ms. Evans eloquently said.
Yes, sir.
With a recommendation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
The next item is item six point zero one, receive for action, the contract with communities and schools.
Mr. Coleman? As a, for the board, receive a copy of their recent annual report, their mid-year report, and their weekly report that we sent out. They also receive a copy of the agreement and a copy of the metrics that will be, that are going to be used to measure the success of partnership. Each of you should also have the impact statement that was provided. Really, CIS is not here to present, but to answer any questions. Because you previously received the information, last two weekly reports.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett. And that is correct, board members. We've received an abundance of information from CIS at this point that we've had an opportunity to go over. Does anyone have any questions for you? Ms. Sturtevant?
No question, just a, a comment. I just wanted to, whenever I have the opportunity to say this, I always say, want to say thank you to the communities and schools. Because the investment that you all put into Richmond Public Schools, the benefit that Richmond Public Schools and our students get from communities and schools far outweighs the dollars that we, as a school system, put into communities and schools. And so, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Fisher and to your staff and everybody in communities and schools for all the phenomenal work that you all do in Richmond Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Sturtevant. It's certainly our honor to be this way. Thank you.
Ms. Mohammed?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank community and schools as well. They are a partner for this year's back to school rally. They donated a lot of items for our students and our teachers, and they have always supported the teacher and staff appreciation dance. So, and I have shared this with Dr. Fisher, but I will say it, since some of his team members are here, I really appreciate the work that you all are doing for our students. I really appreciate you all being in the forefront of when they need supplies, when our teachers need supplies. That, that really means a lot. Coming from someone who's an educator and does this every day, so I just want to thank you all personally again for supporting what we do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Coleman?
As the proud seventh district representative in the East End, I want to commend you all for the staff that you have on the ground in the schools. Just doing good work. Work that, again, for our kids that need that full package of services. Just, it takes a lot of heart, a lot of commitment, a lot of hard work. And I've had the opportunity over the years to work with some just outstanding people in the, on the ground, day to day. And I know you guys work hard at making sure you find the right kind of people for our students. And that is to be appreciated.
Thank you very much. If, if I might, I'd like to introduce the people with me.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, I'd like to just introduce people with me. I think everybody knows Carrie Harris, who's our vice president of, of school and community partnerships, and does an incredible job making sure that everything is connected. I'd also like to introduce Gersley Verna, who is brand new with us. She comes out of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, and she is the vice president of operations and is doing the day-to-day work. She's been with nonprofits before, but most recently has been doing work with McKenna Vento students at Charlotte Mecklenburg. So it comes with a, a great deal of, of experience for us. The other two things I wanted to point out is just a couple of changes. If I could, so, in a change to your, to the document that you have, we've gone through, now that graduation is done for summer school, we had a hundred and nine students graduate out of the Performance Learning Center, out of the regular Performance Learning Center. We had another fifty-four students graduate out of our Twilight Program at the Performance Learning Centers. And out of the fifty-four students who walked across the stage of graduation last week, thirty-nine of those were PLC students, that graduated summer school. So this has been quite a season. The other thing is a couple of changes that we've made in our staffing, in, in talking with the superintendent this year, and looking at the changes in the demographics around. We have, for a long time, only had a part-time person at Green Elementary School. Many of you know, we, we struggled to get to, to change that. But when we, when we looked at the data about who is at Green, and eighty-one percent ESL students there, we have invested, and we're putting a full-time stu-, a full-time staff at Green Elementary School. And in the reduction that we're doing with, with the closing of Elkhart, Thompson's going to move to one point five, so that we have enough people to support the additional enrollment at Thompson, along with that ESL population there. And we're doing that with the adjustments of trying to, we will be moving Benford, at this point, down to a point five person, until we see how that enrollment kind of falls through, and then we'll make the appropriate adjustment at that time. But we thought it very important that we beef up the work that we're doing at Green, and that we certainly try to support the efforts that the school system's doing with Elkhart and Thompson.
All right. Is there a motion? Oh, Miss Evans, okay, thanks.
I had a quick question first. You said you were moving them to point five, which means that Benford currently doesn't have a person from your staff?
Benford have, will have a half-time person.
I mean, prior to now, they had no one there representing from your company?
No, they had a full-time staff member.
Oh, so you're reducing it, okay.
Right, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's in order to make sure that we have full-time at Green and one and a half people here.
Okay, how many schools are you all in?
We'll be in forty with the closing of Elkhart, so forty schools.
Okay.
All right. So, so moved.
Second. The motion was made by Mr. Sturtevant and seconded by Ms. Harris Mohammed to approve the contract with communities and schools. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Upstair.
Motion passes seven, as in one extension.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is six point zero three, receive for action, human resources actions.
School board members, good evening. I present to you tonight the HR actions for approval, which include the nomination of one hundred and two employees, the change of contract of fifty-four employees, the transfer of twelve employees. And actions for information include the resignation of eighteen employees, the rescission of resignation of one employee, the retirement of eight employees, the change of name of two employees, the reappointment of eighteen employees, and the furlough of one employee. In addition, you receive tonight an addendum to the agenda, which includes the nomination of additional eight employees, the change of contract of an additional five employees, and the resignation of an additional two employees.
Okay, Ms. Phillips, um, do we have questions for close, as we do?
I don't.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed has a general question for us.
On the addendum on page two, this is just a generic question, Mr. Phillips. Number two, it's the same school. So is that a, is the number different in terms of how this person is getting paid?
Yes, it, I can probably discuss it in close.
Okay, okay, that's fine, thank you. But same school?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion in close.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
The next item is six point zero four, receive for action, board travel and district activity requests. Mr. Sturtevant has put forward a request to sponsor a table for the TJ Vikings fundraiser, athletic booster fundraiser. And it's August twentieth, and the cost to sponsor that table is four hundred and fifty dollars. And Mrs. Harris Mohammed has something she wants to add.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, may I go? I mean, may I speak?
Yes, Ms. Mohammed.
Board members, I failed to ask you all, I guess, at our last meeting, if I could use a certain amount of our new constituents' money for the back to school rally. Ms. Lewis may be aware this evening that we had not received that for an action. So I wanted to know if you all would approve me using three hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents? That's actually how much I've, I've spent. And would I need to spend anymore?
Very. Any discussion on that? All right. So we'll take the two as a package? Do we have a motion to approve those two requests?
To request relative to travel and district activities.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Motion was made by Dr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Pinky Epps to approve school board travel and district activity requests for Mr. Sturtevant and Mrs. Harris Mohammed. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Evans, we're already into...
I had my hand up before she started reading. I just wanted to hear what they were again, what the requests were.
All right.
Mr. Sturtevant made a request to sponsor a table for the athletic booster at Thomas Jefferson for four hundred and fifty dollars. And Mrs. Harris Mohammed made a request for her back to school rally for three hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Thank you.
Okay.
Again, the motion was made by Dr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Pinky Epps. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, and I'm the dancing bear.
Motion passes eight, zero. The next item is to approve the minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, and they were distributed to you. For your review, we just asked if they were approved at this time. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? I'm sorry, Mrs. Pinky Epps.
Ms. Evans?
Would this be approved on current, with all of our minutes?
No, ma'am, we are still getting four hundred minutes. So we'll bring most current ones forward as we get them done, and I'm bringing the, the backwards. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinky Epps?
Upstair.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes six, as one day and one extension. The next items on the agenda are other informational items, and they are to receive the playground safety plan and an update on pre-K classes at St. Paul's Baptist Church.
And, Mr. Krantz is coming to actually give us something.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. The playground safety plan, under state regulations, because we have what's called childcare centers with our early childhood operations, we're required to have a safety plan in place for our playgrounds, which basically just shows the maintenance that we're going to do to those playgrounds, which we do today. We're formalizing that plan, and we'll present it to y'all as a board at the August seventeenth meeting for approval. You will get it in the weekly report during the week of August tenth, so that you have an opportunity to read it prior to the meeting on seventeen. The pre-K classes at St. Paul's, we are working through to confirm the lease agreement, as well as ensuring the maximum Daxel number of seats that we'll be able to create using that space. We will come back to y'all as a board on seventeen. We've just run out of time. As you can imagine, with the fast approaching September eighth day and all the things we've got in place, we've just run out of time to physically have that in place by tonight's meeting. So that falls on my shoulders. But it is what it is. We just ran out of time to get it all done. But we'll be back here at the seventeenth. Dr. Jones, you and I will have an off-record conversation about just the whole plan prior to that seventeenth.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, would like to schedule a meeting with you about that Tuesday. I wanted to know, and when we meet, we can talk about this in more detail. Do we have the opportunities to expand the same idea to other churches?
Our goal, the one thing we do not have right now, south of the river today, we have, in pre-, in schools, we have fifty-one pre-K classes. We have Neymont, Mary Scott, and soon to be on August eighteenth, the MLK Pre-K Center is going to open through north of the river. The area with the greatest road, and the one that we don't have pre-K centers is south of the river today. We have Blackwell, but we have the fewest number of available seats south of the river. So our goal is, as an administration, that's the children we need to grab as soon as we possibly can and get them into our school system and begin that process so we can all be successful. So we want to create more pre-K centers, and that's the whole intent, our goal of the relationship at St. Paul's. If there are other churches that have come up, I'll be visiting those churches prior to the meeting on the seventeenth.
Ms. Mohammed?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Can I give you?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman.
Ms. Mohammed?
Can I, um, just send you two ideas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Mr. Krantz, perhaps you could answer this, or maybe not. It's my understanding that there have been, at least recently, there was a meeting with some of the daycare providers with regard to providing space in their facilities. Do you know anything about that?
I'm not aware of such a meeting. I'm not aware of it. But I can find out and get back to you, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay. For my clarity, when we talk about pre-K, are we including Head Start, VPI? Is that, is pre-K just the name for all of that?
Right. It's everything. And we're trying to find ways to maximize the services we can offer in remote list programs.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So perhaps, Dr. Bedden, if you could also work with, uh, Mr. Krantz to confirm that if there are meetings taking place with, uh, daycare providers about providing any additional space?
There have, there have been previous conversations that, uh, that I've authorized Ron to be open to that, that they are those who want to operate with our academic program. In other words, they are addressing our brick and mortar limitations, but they need to be willing to operate in the function of other guidelines that are passed down from the state, and the district has to function within. Now, if there are more, I don't know if Ms. Kane is aware of any more recent ones, but we previously, last year, had some conversations, but I don't know of any this past year, so we'll reach out to Ron, but that was something that, you know, we've talked about with the state and, uh, local, those who express interest, but we still ultimately, if they want to partner with us, it's about running our program within their facility. Does that make sense?
If I may, that, oop, that's my understanding, that the conversations are taking place, individual, uh, that may have the space, as, the conversation to incentivize them to offer their space is that, you know, we're going to provide the teachers, we're going to provide the curriculum, and so I, I, I don't understand.
We'll get, we'll get.
What's in it for us?
We'll get, we'll get you, Dr. Bedden, so we'll get you there.
Well, we'll, we'll get you to that, but just to answer your question, what would it be in it for us? If we, we now start getting, instead of, how do I say this? Some of them are not giving quality instructional programs. So if we can get them to offer our academic program, that's what would be in it for us. Move away just from a daycare or just watching your children to actually providing a safe learning environment, safe and learning. That's what would be, for example, in it for us.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
Kind of the south side to segue onto, um, the English language learner population, it's really critical to get those students into pre-K programs so that they can be language-ready by kindergarten if possible. How, where are we on the welcome center? Have we gotten the welcome center open?
They've given me keys, and now we can actually go into our space and begin to set up. We'll have the welcome center, um, we're working with, um, Ms. Angela Jones, and we'll have the center set up before the September eighth opening school, if not soon.
So when you say they've given you keys, I know the last time I asked this question.
We've actually now controlled the space.
We have the keys.
Correct, we did not have such prior to the last conversation. Now we control the space.
Okay, that's good news.
Yes, ma'am, very good news.
Hey, Dr. Jones, follow up on Ms. Epps.
When, when we finalize these, um, uh, the agreement with St., with St. Paul, understanding that it's a temporary thing, are we looking at, what's the timeframe that we're looking at?
No more than a year.
A year.
Because things will change as you develop, you know, we finalize the facilities task force with the option five. As you recall, some of those recommendations created potential sites that could be used for pre-K centers.
Right.
Um, so it's all part and parcel, so we would, we would want to go no further than a year at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Following up on the, uh, welcome center. Mr. Krantz, do you recall that, uh, the welcome center was going to be, and it's not coming online maybe for September eighth? What is the understanding as for those individuals who the language barrier is an issue? I thought we had previously talked about having, um, someone in that welcome center where individuals could one-stop, they could go and register there, and all their paperwork and everything would be taken care of, and then they would be sent out to the schools.
And that's still the primary objective of that welcome center, that we provide those services and assessments for our English language population. So, um, we're just working with Ms. Jones and then whomever else will come into play, um, to get it set up and be able to address both the English language learners, as well as services point for our face, for part of our face operation in the south part of our school.
Okay, and so what is the anticipated outcome? Is they, they go to this welcome center, someone's there that speaks their language, but then when they go to the school, there's no one there that speaks the language? What, how should that work?
I mean, it's my understanding we'll have folks there that speak their language.
Okay.
And then we will address those issues, but I'll pass it to Dr. Williams.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, Ms. Epps, you are correct that the primary purpose, uh, for the welcome center was to make sure that families were supported, that there were interpreters on hand, so that, um, families who did not speak English as their primary language would have immediate feedback, just as our English speaking families have when they go into Shimeraza, with the other school. Uh, we had hoped to get in and open it sooner, uh, but Ms. Jones, Jones and I are working, um, diligently to get up and running as soon as possible, because we realize those August months, um, families are looking at immunizations and some of that key information. Um, so we will probably be doing a graduated, um, implementation, um, because we do want to open the doors as soon as possible to relieve the burden on families from running to this school, running back and forth. And so we'll provide updates each weekly report for you, um, on progress moving forward.
Okay, and as a side note, for the, uh, uh, enrollment, the, uh, individuals that do the enrollment on site, um, is it possible that, uh, they can maybe, as part of their professional development, get some conversation on Spanish, even if they just create a cheat sheet, and they learn how to say some basic things to those families if they happen to hit the school?
And we'll definitely share that. I believe our PD team is probably working on some of that information, and I know previously we have offered, um, some conversational Spanish classes for RPS employees, but we'll definitely make sure that information gets to Ms. Kane and her team, um, who spearhead the professional development activities.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Epps, I think the benefit of localizing the registration process, it becomes easier for your staff to get people with second language rather than having multiple schools. So the ideal would be is that it would make it easier for us to have people with second language skills, uh, at that location, so that's a goal, to address that. But the second phase of that is then you're able to pursue other, um, electronic devices that aid in interpretation, and put it in one spot rather than in multiple places. So we have had some previous conversations about some devices that do help with translation and communication, and you put it in one place, it's easier than trying to buy multiple devices that we can't afford.
Bravo, and I promise I'm done. Um, Language Line, are we even using that again this year?
So we still will have access to that, um, because sometimes families will walk into buildings, um, that may not have interpreters readily, readily available, and we want to make sure that those families get information, um, as quickly as possible. We don't want to have to defer them, so we will have access to Language Line, but there will also be, again, um, part of our language support plan will be securing interpreters for scheduled events that we know about. But if a family walks in, we want to make sure that we can receive them, as we would any family that came to RPS.
And should principals understand that they should be budgeting, is that still going to come out of their budgets?
It's all handled centrally. We want to relieve the burden with the administrative pieces for schools who want them just to receive our families, and centrally in the Family and Community Engagement Office, we will handle the setup, the organization monitoring, but we'll make sure that we, um, provide reminders for staff during our Leadership Institute about the Language Lab as we will roll out and, um, share our updated language support plan.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Hold on, Ms. Taylor.
I may have missed it in stepping out briefly, but, um, how many students is the church location to hold for K five?
The, the St. Paul would be just?
I mean, K four, I'm sorry.
Would be, okay, the St. Paul side would be just for pre-K.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant for pre-K.
It depends on how many of those rooms, there's potentially eight classrooms there, um, so approximately eighty total students would generally be looking at.
Okay.
Three eighty and a hundred and twenty, it just depends on how many of them use inside those rooms.
Okay, and that would, um, would that at all free up space within our in-house?
That's not the intent. The intent right now is to increase the population we're serving with pre-K services.
To pull people more than we used.
Correct, if we, and in, under, if we execute option five, that would free up classroom space where we can take them from their schools and put them into a central, use a central location for our pre-K program.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krantz. Madam Clerk.
Next item is closed session.
Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one and seven of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene in closed session two one, discuss prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this date and employee matters age fifteen sixteen dash zero four and fifteen sixteen dash zero five. Two, for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or regarding a personnel matter where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board.
The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Gray to go into closed on a failure. Have any approvals, any abstentions? We are now closed session.